跟着呢 主席，我想感谢成员们对发展局的 estimates 的兴趣。我 respective 管理官员，规划和土地部门，相关部门都提供了 234 个书面问题，由成员们 靠近使用资源嘅管理，我们是来这里回应任何 further 问题嘅员们可能想提嘅 好，我相信你。请继续。2018-19 回归 expenditure 和 planning lands 是 $5.62 亿， 表现一个增长约 490 亿，或者大约 9.5% 相比于 revised estimate 2017-18，会有 net 增加 548个 civil service post 在 planning and lands 部门 和管理部门管理下， 包括 17个 civil service post 替代 non-civil service contract post。地址建设 director civil service post 增加 53。这些额外嘅 resources 这一年主要部署到 foreign areas 先。第二，加强 safeguarding 建筑安全。第三，提高土地管理与 planning 嘅工作。增加土地供应，土地供应是发展局嘅 top priority。我们继续采用 multi-point approach，创建 finance on all fronts，包括履行 coordinating studies on brownfield sites 和推进新 development area projects，给予充分嘅支持土地供应。两年后，将完成一项研究，提供土地供应嘅基础，发展 brownfield sites。在实施开发项目嘅过程中，我们会加强与 affected 家庭和 stakeholders 之间嘅沟通， 使尽最大努力在 expanding 和 making compensation location arrangements。任务团队也在全力支持最终准备五个月 public engagement exercise， 将于今年年底进行。在这个方面，额外嘅 manpower 会被部署到 buildings 部门，处理建筑计划批准嘅工作。而 centralized coordinating section 处理土地供应会被建立， 在 lands 部门集中于处理 big ticket lease modification land exchange 事件。在此之外，还有一个 departmental steering group 被设立，在发展局的 PLB 下， 我们会参与 industry 在过程，包括 special committee 包含代表关于相关专业机构和 associations 的专业，即将在后续的 原则之下，土地和发展 advisory committee。我们打算在 2018年 latter half 的第一批 streamlined arrangement 在 latter half of 2018 年内实施。财政部长指示， $1 亿会被挪用以支持 NGO 利用 vacant government size 对社区用途， 会包括 vacant school premises。我们会咨询发展部在 latter half of 2018 年前寻求资金批准， 从 finance committee 当然化特定嘅 implementation arrangements。在此期间，我们还评估如何促进 industrial buildings 的 revitalization。我们的目标是在 2018 年中旬做出 proposed initiative。在 safeguarding 建筑安全嘅工作中，我们会实施 operation building by 2.0， 会升级 department enforcement actions 面对 building slope safety， 增加建筑 other related work。政府计划也会包括优化 efficiency 加入 joint office 在 program 中处理 water supply 问题。政府计划分配 $3 亿 non-recurring expenditure 对 OBB 2.0， 没有通过 approval 2018 年。政府计划从 2018 年开始接受 approval。在考虑 lead time 需要时， ULA 各相关部门 organizations 已经已经发表 briefs 对 first round target buildings 解释 arrangement。我们的目标是提供 appropriate技术与 financial assistance 对 2,500 个 eligible domestic and composite buildings 和 rehabilitation work 需要 under the mandatory building inspection scheme 在接下来的五个年里会被覆盖。最后， both lands department and planning department 都被分配了额外嘅 manpower 增加 enforcement against illegal use of lands， 包括派遣 patrol at black sports against illegal occupation of government land 和采取 arrest enforcement action against offenders。谢谢。科长劳国凤， 土地供应将于 2018 年举行。你不会因为 relocation 和 compensation 问题而实现这一点。你可以只能做这个，你只能在 2018 年开始做这个。所以作为结果， 2023 年会有 severe drop in land supply。稳定的 land supply 很重要，当涉及到发展新 town 项目时。来得顺利， 你必须确保 affected residents 会被 educatedly compensated and relocated。我们的 compensation system 是最 backward，即使与 mainland 相比。在其他地方， mainland 他们会获得 compensation 等于 1.2、1.3 或者甚至 1.5 因为 replacement house。但你只给了它们 public rental housing unit， 没有需要通过 means test 和 asset test。所以这是 one for one exchange 在这个， under this arrangement。当土地供应和 compensation arrangement 设计在 such a way that the waving of means test and asset test 会占其一部分。嗯，当前 地租 arrangement 是合理的，在一些， 在某种意义上，但我们会 review the arrangement，看看我们可以做什么改进。在土地供应 project 的咨询中， whether the cash expressure payment can be adjusted upwards 和 whether the compensation package 可以更 flexible， 例如，那些不能通过 asset 或 means test 可以也被 rehoused。我们认真地考虑了这一点， 我不能说在这个阶段，相关的 criteria 会不会改变，或者它们什么时候会被改变。我不想现在 speculate。如果我们要改变这些 criteria，我们会采纳正当的解释， 如果不是，我们也会考虑这些原因。我们正在追赶通冲新 town 项目嘅 construction 阶段。我们得到了 funding approval，六个月之后比我们预期的晚一点， 但是 population data 不会改变很多。但最重要嘅事情是你应该 rehouse 他们， 之前清理他们的 residences。我想谈谈 PL077。这是 关于共享自行车运营。你可以看到，它们 everywhere，它们 everywhere 都停。嗯，如果 something is the force within the purview of the departments， FHD，lands，police， 和 home affairs 都要扮演一个角色， 你有 some joint studies。嗯，这个想法很吸引人。我们必须打理麻烦。所以 perhaps you should just cancel this policy， 而且对他们来说，低碳 economy 和绿色。政府应该尝试找到宽泛的 pavement 在一些地区， 然后你需要提供空间。如果不是， 你应该惩罚公司出租出， renting out the e-s bicycles。人们会到处停。你会去谈与行业。现在，他们使用公共区域， 来清除这些 abandoned bicycles， 而且很难抓住 cyclists。所以你会考虑这个计划。如果 transport 部门觉得我们应该有 bicycle park， 是 THB 的 portfolio，我们会提供必要的设施。雨季， 但在我们的 main reply，我们已经说过，我们没有计划 site for Hong Kong People project。但是对于 Kai-Tech One project，我不知道为什么， lands 部门授权过 60% 的单位被 resold， 70% 被允许 consent 或 approval to lease，to lease out to other parties。为什么这么多这样的单位被 consent， 被允许 resell 或 lease？ 如果这么多 consent 被 given，被 granted， 不是政策已经扭曲了吗？ 我想得到 lands 的 director 的回答。科长，让我谈谈政策。然后我会邀请我的 colleagues 从 lands 部门讨论实际的实施。所以，没有，没有对 lease 或 resell 压制。是的，他们可以做这个，没有限制， 但他们必须把单位卖给另一个有香港 ID 的人。
在执行实际执行， approval 或 vetting 是需要的， 以确定这个 criteria， 而且 property 只能被 resell 给一个香港居民。所以这不是 discretion。所以这是唯一 criteria，当你考虑 application 当 Hong Kong Property for Hong Kong People policy 防行时， 它不是没有 controversy。但是，你同意这个 应该不是一个 speculative activity？ 通过这个机制， property holders 只能 resell 给香港 permanent residents， 再次，a consent 是需要的， for lease，例如，如果租赁期很长， 例如 30或40 年， 而 lease 不能超过五年。所以原则是一样的。对于实际嘅 operational details，我会邀请陈先生补充。lands 部门是负责实施 Hong Kong Property for Hong Kong People policy 对 两个， 对这两个地方有 HKPHAP 条件， 无 written consent of the lands department，这些 property 不能被 resell。当我们允许 sale 的时候， 我们必须首先确定买家是香港 permanent resident， 而如部长所说， HKPHAP policy 不提示房屋或 property 不能被 subleased。所以，所有香港 permanent residents， 都需要 lands 部门的 consent 从之前签订出售和购买协议之前， 而 lands 部门需要买家的 identity 必须通过 statutory declaration。所以通常买家会申请 lands 部门在卖掉之前提交 consent， 这是韩亚晨。这是一个关于杰米·泰姆的问题。导演说在出售之前，consent 必须要求， 导演谈到两边的 counsel。我可以申请 selling consent，underlet 或 license， 和 mortgage 或 charge 同时，是否有一个一停服务？ 导演，谢谢你的问题。在 lands 部门网站上， 我们解释了在 HKPHAP policy 的 arrangement 对 selling consent， consent to underlet or lease，和 mortgage 或 charge 显然说明。如果买家想卖掉，买家必须是香港 permanent resident。所以 consent 的目的就是确定买家的 identity。如果任何买家想提交 lands 部门的 application， 他们只需要填写一个表，我们会允许 consent 在条件下，买家必须使用特定的 form 使用 statutory declaration， 而那个人必须是香港 permanent resident。declaration 必须通过 solicitor， 而 solicitor必须确保买家满足 HKPHAP 的要求， 而 statutory declaration 的一份复制会与 lands 部门记录。通常，对于想卖掉或 underlet 的卖家，他们可以提交 lands 部门。所以，这意味着他们需要到 lands registry 来递交 statutory declaration？ 信息是否可以公开，而不是 solicitors？ 如我们解释的， consent 只会在买家递交 statutory declaration 之后才被允许。而 solicitor必须确定买家的 identity， 以及买家符合 HKPHAP。我们不需要 statutory declaration 与 lands registry 发表， 但一份复制会在 lands 部门保存。首先，需要 statutory declaration 买家， 而第二，涉及的 solicitor必须核实这个 declaration， 并确认买家的 identity。我想问 PL006。这是关于土地供应任务。他们会花费 $12 亿用于 public engagement。我想知道有没有进行 open tendering， 而且如何在 PE exercise 下进行？ 谢谢你的问题。任务团队邀请了两家公司， 一家公司会负责 public engagement 和准备 pamphlets， 而这些公司招募已经通过 tendering 过程。下一位，科长劳。主席， 土地资源稀缺， 而每个人都谈论土地的 sourcing， 而 TFLS 会有一个 discussion 和 territory wide consultation， 对于新的社区， 那里是车自由的， 是否 planning parameters 如居住 density 会受到影响？ 这个提议是由 recently retired TD 部门员工， 科长郎希Y， 在 Discovery Bay 和 Park Island， 他们不会让你开车。你可以共享单车，mini bus，等等。特别是相对较少 accessible 地区。有很多因素要考虑。让我举个例子， 这可能会导致 nearby 社区的 parking lot 的价格提高？ 这些地区是 self-sufficient，比如 同 discovery bay 和 park island 也适用。我们一直在谈论 certain facilities， 而我们和 power grid facilities 会安装，等等。或 feed-in tariff。我们正在考虑环境局的问题。现在，对于 certain comfort facilities 和 minor works， 它们不需要 approval，只有 report 需要。我们在未来可以有 greater flexibility？ 现在有一些限制，比如高度。所以我们正在与 environment bureau 一起工作。从 renewable， 嗯，环境局会考虑 renewable energy 和我们建筑安全。所以一旦 results 是 available，我们会向发展 electrical panels 报告。谢谢。下一个，克劳迪娅·莫。我的问题很简单。以消除 colonial 特征的符号或标志？ 例如，Queen's Road East， 而在 Kowloon Town， 我们有 Oxford，Cambridge Road，等等，Durham Road， 你说了政府没有计划系统地重新命名街道以 established 名字。所以我的理解是， 为了删除 colonial 特征。在雅马哈市以前，有一条 square street， 嗯，它以前被称为 square street，但现在被称为 public square street。所以， 在 main reply 如果街道需要被重命名， lands 部门会考虑潜在的混乱和 inconvenience 对本地居民、企业、公众，等等。colonialization 不是我们考虑的。对于随意的改名， 当我们考虑特定街道时， 很常见地，提议会来自特定的 public and district councils。科长，你能给我一些例子吗？ 当涉及街道名称时， lands 部门会考虑实际的需求， 而 existing roads，
In the um secretary's speech, he talked about um land supply and available land, but you did did not mention the um Fanning Gulf course at all. Is the topic too sensitive to mention or is there a a lack of progress? Um this is on the um back burner for a lot of people because it is a significant piece of government land.
在政府 Thank you, Miss Mo, for your question. To the government, uh developing land is very important. And the task force is going to embark on a five-month consultation exercise. And then one of the issues to consider is the uh private uh pressured uh lease, which is not mentioned in the opening speech because of the need to con- uh to um keep this speech brief. Please project the number uh on the screen, which will make it convenient. I will ask the secretary to explain. Uh no, there's no need to do this, to we have to save time. Uh we well, we talk about the the number. Well, it's good to have a number. But you've heard it, maybe next year. In the past, we did have the uh reply number. It's good to have the reply number, even if it's just a reply ma- a number. But you are not stating the fact. You 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 said the 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 reply number was given, but the the content was never the display. Uh well, pe- please, please. Uh if you have the number, then I know how to follow up. I can have said that we have, I can consider re- providing this reply serial number. That's all I want to have. Yeah, that's not the all right, uh if you say that you you will not provide the uh the answer or the reply, you should give us the reply serial number. That would be good enough. To make available data in the uh through a public publicly accessible platform, so that private uh parties can have access. I believe the government is uh going to do this. At present, it will take a long time to implement this uh policy direction. We need to open up data. Uh the industry would like to get some of those first. We'll make some heavy. For example, T F E D M on uh employment and uh population. But there were some uh controversies controversies. And that is a private organizations could not uh have access to those. But you want, when you apply for uh planning approval and it goes against the government's uh established uh guy- guidelines, then the chance of getting approval is very low indeed. We have a four hundred uh areas which can be uh grouped into different major zones. The industry find this arrangement difficult to use to to use. So I want the secretary to further open up such data to uh to to the pe- to the public. On the uh um sharing of uh space data or C S D I, that we have a policy to open up as far as we can. And in um the middle of two twenty eighteen, uh there will be a further platform. A lot of information is kept by the lands department. And some information are with the uh planning department. Well, they have to consider that if the information is provided to a very small area, about area, very small area, then there's a contro- uh confidential question issue of confidentiality. And sometimes they do not provide a very detailed breakdowns. If the industry would like to make such suggestions, we are willing to consider such suggestions without uh breaching or violating government's policy considerations. Well, we have to be realistic. And I don't think the government is against private parties that taking forward private projects. But we want to tie in with government efforts in taking forward uh development projects. Let's do more in deregulation and taking down of barriers. Please take into consideration the actual needs of the industry. Next, Doctor Quo Kake. It's a two one, reply number two one five. But yesterday, when we talk about housing, secretary, hundreds of thousands of uh people in Hong Kong are waiting for more land site to be identified by you. And he said that the uh task force on land supply chaired by Mister Wong Yuen-Fai have come up with uh suggestions in the immediate uh to uh distant future. Most sites are owned by the government. Well, for reserve for village-type the housing, how how much land is reserved for this purpose? In agricultural zones, hundreds according to the latest information. There's another one, uh Shantin, Yanshou Way and Tongshou Way. Next to the shopping facility. Uh this is the the what it looked like in the past. It's the river, a river, uh five fifty thousand square feet uh was reclaimed. And now this is a site, construction site. It you can build fifty to seventy small houses there at a cost of uh at a at a value of one four point, one to one point four billion dollars. So the government tolerates the uh destruction of agricultural land on brownfield sites. And now even the filling up the river channel is allowed. Are you going to, are you saying that you you can allow or you encourage people to uh build small houses by filling up river channels? And at the same time, uh you ignore the welfare of of people who have to wait for public rental housing for up to for for at least of seven, four point seven years. It's difficult to the respond to a single individual case. Uh I think the D S D is aware of this. If we look at the this year's budget, we have devoted more resources to enhancing the capacity to enforce uh land-related uh legislation. In the N T, it said that some people would destruct those sites before they apply for development. For example, they fell the tree or burned the grass. And then they would tell the town planning board that the land has been um damaged. And and town planning board should turn the sites uh into the vision sites. I was of at the chairman of the town planning board. I would say that this would not uh be accepted. This is not going to be accepted by the town planning board for recently. Doctor Quo says that we hold many land sites. Yes, in the visions, uh we have a lot of uh sites, but there are also many other privately-owned visions sites. So that's what we can see. Fifty square feet of uh water surface now reclaimed as a land, as a as a site. And the government is saying that you can do nothing about this. How can you safeguard public interest if you allow this to go ahead? This is a real case. Go to Shantin with me if you want. In the rural area, uh we if something is done to uh damage the environment, it will be saddened. Uh we have done a lot to ensure the protection of the uh natural environment. But it's a cat and mouse situation. Uh our current law enforcement arrangements are restricted in some way. For example, if there's no the development permission area before the formulation of the O S I P, then the uh planning department has no power to enforce the rules. Let's say if there's an agricultural site. If something is stored there, if provided that the height is not uh exceeding a certain limit, then there's no non-compliance of the law. So we cannot really take action, but uh we still endeavor to do the best in enforcing the such laws. This is Chiu Hui-Dick. It's a ele- number eleven, a reply serial number eleven. Uh today, through some briefing, the government has asked some media to tell us that there will be a gap, a sudden drop in land supply. Now, the latest H O S has attracted many more times of application than the number of units. It said that in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there will be thirteen sites for private residential the development with a total area of twenty-seven hectares. Mister Si Wing-Chen, the the boss of uh of Centolite Property Agency said that although property prices are high, but we don't have to let everyone to become a property owners. We only need twenty thousand high-income earners to take up all the flats available. And we have already got two point five million uh flats. So according to Mister C, well, you'd make twenty thousand flats available and many high-income earners, including uh new arrivals, new Hong Kong uh citizens can uh take up all those flats. If you say that uh the green form, the G F S scheme would not affect Hong Kong people. And I would like to ask the secretary to convert these thirteen sites, twenty sectors, twenty-seven hectares, to be used for the public housing program. At least uh turn them into H O S uh developments. And the supply will not be lower than the original plan. For the eighty percent of Hong Kong people who would not otherwise be uh able, would not be able to afford a private housing, they would be benefited. What are the downside of doing this? Uh if we make these sites available for eighty percent of those people, uh secretary, let's look at the policy intent in the land allocation. Let's look at the long-term housing strategy for the for the for the next ten years. It's at the sixty percent of public housing, forty percent private housing. We understand that there is a this surprise tight for public housing. We have made some adjustments, so that more sites have been made available for public housing programs. In the past two years, of the uh size to to be put on the land sale program, uh we have uh provided eleven thousand flats. Uh then eighteen thousand have been converted from private to pri- to public uh housing programs. We are talking about three hundred and ten uh uh flats, which means that we have exceeded the sixty percent uh ratio. Starting from twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we started the planning. And then by the time we have the flats available, there's a time lag in between.
Chairman, I'd like to add something. Let's not talk about the um long-term situation. You told the media that there would be a um gap of fall-off in supply. So the the problem mainly arises from public housing rather than private housing. So why can't, why are you granting twenty-seven hectares of um land for housing development? First of all, I did not leak any such news. I must clarify this. Now, back to the fundamentals. In terms of the potential land supply, we have never said that all the potential land supply can be um would be sold. When you look at the ratio this year, for example, um some projects like Wan Kai-Tang are still in progress. If you assume that every piece of land can be used for high-density public housing development, it is not right. When you look at our land sale program, some are, some sites are in Lantau South. The um development density is less than zero point five. In terms of planning, some sites are more suitable for public housing, some for private housing, and there are many considerations for Kudung North and Fanning North. After um accounting for the infrastructure constraints, we can accommodate an extra about eleven thousand flats, and they are fully um reserved for public housing. And there were doubts from the community that um this would turn these uh turn Kudung North or Fang North into um sad neighborhoods. Uh Mister Chu, please wait for the next round. Mister Frank Yeh, thank you. I'd like to ask about reply number two, three, four, about the Hong Shui Kiu new development area and the brownfield operators within. Later, the um government would resume the land and there would be a compensation policy. At an earlier panel meeting, we discussed the issue. And one of the um criteria is that the operators must be operating for at least ten years before they can uh or they are eligible for compensation from the government. If you require in situ operation for ten years, a lot of people might not be eligible. And um many operators have been operating in this same spot or in the same district for ten years, but they might have relocated their operation due to expansion. So they might not be at that location for ten years. But if you consider operation within the same district, they many have been here for more than ten years. So I think the arrangement is not reasonable. Would you change the criterion into operating in the same district for ten years instead? You will apply for funding from um the finance committee later, but I do not know when. After you complete the feasibility study on multi-story buildings, you hope that affected brownfield operators can be accommodated before, uh they should be accommodated before um you proceed with the land resumption, or else it would affect our economy. Before I answer these questions, I have a point to make. For Hong Shui Kiu, we are talking about a hundred and ninety hectares of brownfield sites. Can we accommodate every one of the operators? We can say that it's not possible. Brownfield sites and um logistics sites account for about sixty hectares. In other, in other words, we can accommodate about a third of the In other words, we can accommodate about a third of the operations. We must consider our allocation mechanism carefully. Because if these sites continue to be used for logistics operations, the land efficiency should be higher. Whereas currently, the efficiency for certain brownfield operations is very low and they are scattered. Earlier, Frank Yeh arranged a meeting with the Development Bureau together with different stakeholders in terms of the re-provisioning and compensation arrangements. Till the government has concrete plans, I would not disclose any details. And I cannot provide a timeline at this point. I'm happy to know that you are yet to make a decision. Now, it's all about fairness. I think the criterion should be changed from in situ operation to operation within the same district. They should, operators should not be disqualified because they moved to another location within the same district. I'm not saying that under ninety-two hectares of space would be given in the future because some operations would be relocated to multi-story buildings. But as we said, if certain operations cannot be re-accommodated, the trade does not mind being located somewhere else. The key is they can continue to operate. So I hope you can consider these factors before you make your decision. Mr. Vincent Chang, I have two questions for the government. First, about number zero, three, eight. And about the Yaowang Plan. In May, the government said that they would look into the Yaowang District Study to see, well, I'm not happy that the demand-led scheme was terminated. So I'd like to know about the progress of the Yaowang District Study. Are there any, have any sites been identified? As for the Operation Building Pride Two Point O, we welcome the idea. But as I have said before, we have many buildings aged thirty or above and they need to be maintained. If they are not included under O B B Two Point O, it is not fair. The government might say that there are a lot of such buildings and they would deal with the older buildings first. Would you consider an interim review? Or once phase one begins in June and July, if not many buildings need to be fixed, would you consider including more buildings? Thank you very much. As for the Urban Renewal Authority Study, it was completed. And by end twenty nineteen, results should be available. So at this point, we have not identified any specific buildings. As for the U R A program or the O B B Two Point O or the demand-led scheme, it is suspended but not terminated because the efficiency was very low. The funds invested were substantial while the number of beneficiaries remained low. As for O B B Two Point O, I'd like to thank Mr. Chang for your support in principle. Every year, we would work on about five hundred buildings under a risk-based approach. The first batch would be buildings aged fifty or above. So that is where we drew the line. And after we, one or two years after we began the operation, if we can deal with buildings aged thirty or above, we would do something. And we are willing to review the operation. As we have explained to the V F N L E C O panel, there is a limit to our energy or efforts. And there were calls that we should work on more buildings, but from our experience, the costs would be driven up. That's why we set a target of five hundred buildings every year based on our experience with O B B One Point O. I have a follow-up question. I think this is a chicken and egg problem. I do not agree that the demand-led scheme has not been effective. At least you can give people hope under this scheme. For the Yaowang District Study, I think the progress is rather slow. So I think you should speed up your work. As for the O B B Two Point O, we indeed have a lot of buildings thirty years old or above and they need to be maintained urgently. So hopefully, the government can relax the criteria. Mr. Jeremy Tam. Question number one nine one about Hong Kong land for Hong Kong people. Or Hong Kong property for Hong Kong people. The government talked about policy intents. So I'd like to talk about the intents of the H K P H A P policy. In Mr. C Y Leng's election manifesto, he talked about the provision of government land for the middle class. And in January two oh one three, for a paper submitted by Transport and Housing Bureau on enhancing the housing policy and tackling housing demand, he said that the H A P H A C, H A P policy would give priority to the housing needs of Hong Kong people. So these are the policy intents. And when the policy was announced, there were different constraints and that is properties can only be resolved to other Hong Kong people and lease or lease agreements cannot be more than five years. And these were reflected in the selling prices. They were slightly cheaper than other properties. For One Kai Tech, the average price was more than two, twenty thousand dollars per feet, which was comparable to other properties in the Kai Tech development. So ultimately, the developers were the ones who benefited. And we had seven to eight hundred cases or applications for sale or underlets. So where is the policy intents? The buying prices were the same as other properties in the area. And once they apply for consent, you would grant it immediately. So long as they declare that they would sell their property to a Hong Kong person, it would be granted. So these are already clear in the land or the leases. And if a seller wants to sell, the solicitor would tell them that they can only sell to a Hong Kong permanent resident. So all these constraints are clearly explained. So what is the consent for? Are you saying that so long as they are willing to fill out a form, they would be given consent? The Hong Kong property for Hong Kong people policy is a complete failure. And the intent was to sell properties to users, but now it's no longer the case. Half of them leasing out the property. So how can you not call this policy a total failure? Are you still fulfilling your policy intents? Thank you very much. If Mr. Tam has criticisms of the H K P H A P policy, I can understand that. But when you talk about policy intent, you should think about the design of the policy. For the measure, when the measure was announced in twenty twelve, there were no constraints on resale or letting out of property to Hong Kong people or Hong Kong permanent residents. And a property under H A P H A P can only be resolved to a fellow Hong Kong permanent resident. So the policy was not a failure. Many Hong Kong permanent residents who bought properties in One Kai Tech did not intend to live there themselves. They intended to let out or sell their properties eventually.
In so doing, they are not violating any requirements or conditions. So you want these people to buy those properties to, to let, so that they can let the properties or to sell the properties? This is speculation. Is that what you want? When the policy was formulated, we made it clear that irrelevant properties can, could only be sold to the other Hong Kong permanent residents. They can also let the properties to Hong Kong permanent residents. And if they are to be led to non-permanent residents, the lease, the lease would not be, would not exceed a certain limit. And additionally, we have no more sites under the Hong Kong property for Hong Kong people sites. I want to ask a question about reply zero number one seven five. We know in the N T, there are many squatter and also in the urban area. In the N T, in recent years, in some villages on land which has no squatter register have been found to be occupied by squatters. You, it said that you have inspected almost two hundred thousand times for the squatter structures. Do you have any breakdowns on hardware they are located? Thank you, Mr. Leng. I'll ask Mr. Chen Chong Jing, the director of lands, to reply. In our reply, we mentioned the inspections to the register, the squatter structures to see if they are, they are still in compliance with our relevant conditions. The member is referring to the structures erected on agricultural land, which may not be in compliance with the lease. We have stepped up our enforcement action. If we discover such structures, we would take immediate action. In twenty seventeen, about seven hundred sixty-one illegal structures were found on agricultural land. Within the same year, we have taken action in one thousand one hundred ninety cases. Some have were carried forward from previous years. So that's why there are different figures for the same year. Among the one thousand one hundred ninety cases, three hundred fifty-two cases have resulted in demolition of structures by the landowner. And seven hundred or so cases have resulted in demolition on the part of the lands department. We'll continue to tackle these cases. For serious cases, we'll try to just stop the population intake. For existing squatters, they may expand the scale or go higher. Are you going to take action against these structures? Well, they may have a red mark painted on the wall, but there are many people, they may, but they are now regarded as squatter structures. Then the housing department and the social welfare department would be put under tremendous pressure. I have handled some cases personally. Can you ask for modification or ratification so that they can continue to use the structures instead of asking those people to move out? Director, can you say something about the enforcement action?
Thank you for your question. On private agricultural land and if there's any newly constructed squatter structure, the lands department adopts a zero tolerance policy. We will not tolerate any new squatter structure for accommodation to be erected on private agricultural land. The member is also talking about squatter structures that were registered in the past and now they have been modified, which make them incompatible with our squatter control policy. In the past, we adopted a more lenient approach. We would ask the occupant, the occupier to rectify the situation. But I hope members will understand that a few years ago, we had to handle some cases in Tai Tam Tong and Puichun in response to public concerns and concerns expressed by members. And that is to say, after the twenty-second of June twenty twelve, if there has been any addition or unauthorized alteration or repair or the adding structures on top of registered structures will not allow the structures to stand. But before that, we would allow the occupier a chance to rectify any structure put there. It's a two oh four. There will be five permanent posts created in, in the planning department to oversee the planning and engineering study for the Ma Liu Suo and Long Kutan Reclamation. I want to talk about Ma Liu Suo Reclamation. The studies, the engineering studies to be carried out by the C E D D. Ma Liu Suo Reclamation is a controversial subject. It's still, it's still controversial. In the Public Capital Works Reserve Fund, because Ma Liu Suo Reclamation is involved. And the concern is that if we give the green light for this C W R F, it would be taken that we support Ma Liu Suo Reclamation. So that's why it's controversial. The study has been completed. I've given this brief report from the C E D D. Just a side issue. I would like these reports to be made available to the public with a Chinese version as well. So the study has been conducted. And even before the study was done, I already knew that the conclusion would be that it's feasible. But would you do it, although it's feasible? It said that you would consult the local residents and stakeholders to chart the future direction for development. And now you're going to create some permanent posts to conduct the planning studies. So does it mean that you are definitely going to do it? Are you going to change O C P so the reclamation will be allowed under the starting O C P? I think the government should first of all consult local people. You should conduct some surveys, opinion survey before you take the next step in planning. How many of the five permanent posts will be created to oversee the planning for the Ma Liu Suo Reclamation? And what is the annual salary involved? Because when we want to move amendments, we need to get
Because when we want to move amendments, we need to get detailed information of this nature in different reclamation projects, especially in projects, in respect of projects that may affect local people. We would do consultation. The government would do this. For Ma Liu Sui and Ma Yan Shan, local residents have views about reclamation. This is understandable. We will do more in disseminating factual information. We are not trying to rush this rule or impose this on the district. We need to carry out the studies to gather the relevant data. One of the concerns that we've heard is traffic, whether there will be traffic congestion resulting from this. If we don't have the data, then we will be talking at cross purpose. Ask the director of planning to say more. For this project, we are given five newly created posts, three professionals and two supporting staff. They would make preparations to embark on the overall planning and engineering study covering not just Ma Liu Sui, but also Long Kuthan. So the same the same team will be responsible for the two projects? Yes. The cost, staff cost is about $3.5 million. In paragraph six of the speech of the secretary, it said that $1 billion will be set aside to support NGOs to make use of vacant government sites. I appreciate that. On O two two, reply zero number O two two. I've asked a question about the land allocated by the lands department. Can you tell us how you assess the applicants? And also how much time is needed from the time of submission of application to approval? An NGO applies for rezoning, they have to get the help of professionals such as engineers and surveyors, and then the studies will be conducted before a rezoning application can be considered. Since there will be the $1 billion for, to support NGOs, can you convene the interdepartmental meetings to provide professional input to NGOs so the NGOs don't have to engage surveyors and engineers on their own? Second is about O one three. In the policy address, it sees announced that that industrial buildings may be allowed to be converted into the temporary housing. But it said that there's no government policy on interim housing. The government would facilitate such projects by NGO, carry out by NGOs. You would be the facilitator. It seems that you are shifting your responsibility to NGO such as Hong Kong CSS. How are you going to facilitate these projects? Is it that you are trying to pass the responsibility to other parties? Can you amend the buildings department so the industrial building can be used for housing? Another question is about O seven eight. This is the Yaomong District Study, and Mr. Wilson Chang said this is a delaying tactic. He said that before the study is completed, the government is not going to review the urban renewal strategy. One of the factors under the URA is to do planning with the community, and it should be people oriented. And under the demand-led projects, you have set up teams to serve the people. But you are not people oriented, and you are not doing planning with the community under those projects because you impose the project on those affected. So if you do not review the urban renewal strategy, the same problems will recur. And I would say that this is just a delaying tactic. Thank you for your questions, Mr. Xu. And I thank Mr. Xu for showing his support to the support measures to NGOs to make use of vacant sites.
The Yaomong District Study is not an obstacle for the government and for the well, there was no delaying because of that. For Yaojimong, there are 3,000-plus old buildings, of which 800 do not have any would not achieve extra GFA by rebuilding. If we only work on these 800-odd buildings, they would have to, they would make a loss of $138 billion. So working on the buildings one by one might not be able to attack the, solve the issues. I think the Yaomong District Study would give us a basis to see how we can proceed with urban renewal. So the study is necessary as for transitional housing. For people who want to provide transitional housing through industrial buildings, of course, a people-led approach was promoted by the government, and the Transport and Housing Bureau would strive to come up with more housing through the Housing Society and Housing Authority, and we still hope that the people can take the lead. We only have about 10 minutes left. Please be brief, or else other questions cannot ask their questions. I will provide written answers. Mr. Wilson, oh.
I have a few questions. First, question 107. All the as you know, the for the dangerous structure removal notices, they are to do with dangerous signboards. But the removal of these dangerous sideboards is extremely slow, and these signboards are still in place for one or one, two, three years. And if they fall, we do not know who will be responsible. For in the dangerous structure removal notices or DSRNs, can you speed up the processing speed? We certainly don't want to see any of them fall down. For question number 114, the question number 3474, and this is about the Water Seapage, or the Joint Office, and they have been criticized of being very inefficient. You often talk about consultancy studies. But at the end, the efficiency of the work remains very low. So how can you speed up the work of the Joint Office in tackling water seapage cases? So how would you deal with them? For the dangerous signboards, these signboards are everywhere. So how can you tackle the issue? If they fall down, the public would be hurt. And the URA is developing a lot of sites for the Kuntong redevelopment. The site is prime. Would the sites be returned to the government for public housing or subsidized housing? So that the hundreds of thousands of people on the waiting list can benefit. We are talking about tackling housing shortage. Would you consider speeding up the rezoning process or streamlining it so that more sites can be made available? Secretary, thank you very much for the question. As for rezoning, we try to speed up the work, but we face certain constraints. For a serious rezoning exercise, we must allow affected persons to express their views to the Town Planning Board. And a study on the consequences of rezoning is needed. So currently rezoning would take from 11 months to 17 months or beyond. It is not difficult, it is not easy to shorten this process. The URA does not have a lot of land. Since it was set up over the last 16 or 17 years, they worked on about 9,000 flats or about 600 per year on average. So I wouldn't call this a very big number. Can we further expand the role of the URA going forward? And after the Yaojimong Study is completed, we would revisit the issue. As for the Joint Office, after it was set up, before the Water Seapage Joint Office was set up, in 14 of the cases, the source of water seapage was identified, but after the office was set up, the figure rose to 40%. But we are looking at difficulties in entering premises, et cetera. The AVHD and Buildings Department would carry out a joint review to see how we can better improve our workflow. As for the dangerous signboards, I would offer a written response afterwards. I'm a non-executive director of the URA. A number of members asked about the Yaomong Consultancy Study or District Study. It is not that we need to conduct a study because the pace of urban renewal is slow. A study would take time. Money is secondary because the government would certainly pay the URA if they are losing money. So the URA does not have to think about money. But for a major redevelopment like this, would all the residents be removed from the urban areas? How can we rehouse those living in old areas? And do all buildings have to be removed? If so, a lot of buildings would have to be gone. So how can we improve the housing so that the living quality of the residents can be safeguarded? And that they would not be forced to move into expensive properties because of redevelopment? I hope the secretary can meet our head and give us a written reply, or else the public would have the impression or would have a bad impression of the URA. Actually, the URA wants residents to stay in their original area rather than to remove them. I think the secretary should invite the head to clarify the work of URA. I have a few questions. Recently, yes, a few days ago, I asked the same question of the secretary for transport and housing. I asked whether URA could work with the HA or HS on housing sites, and they said the URA is under the ambit of the Secretary for Development, so can the URA work with the HA or HS to develop public housing? I understand that we do not have a number of flats, but we will have more going forward. But regardless, the site would be enough for subsidized public housing. So would the government support this proposal? Under the current tendering scheme, any URA housing in the future, due to the open tendering approach, the cost would be very high, and the grassroots cannot afford to live in urban areas. The only solution is to develop public housing. If you want to speed up urban renewal, the acquisition of land from the URA to be granted to developers, this is a very long process because developers have no intention to acquire in land for themselves, and they would wait to, they would wait for URA sites. So would the government work with the, or the URA work with the HA and HS to develop public housing? For question 100, the secretary did not ask, did not answer my question about the so-called capsule homes. And if you do not pay attention to this mode of accommodation in case of fire or other incidents, safety of residents would be compromised. So hopefully you can you can address this question. Thank you very much, Ms. Mac. I would be very brief. I'm happy to work with the head of the URA to clarify the background of the Yaojimong District Study. As for the second question or comment, I cannot give a concrete answer at this point. When the Yaojimong District Study is completed, we would revisit the role and function of the URA. I would not close the door at this point, but I well, I would not say that they have a major role to play in public housing. Historically speaking, the HA and HS are responsible for public housing. The URA is responsible for acquiring and releasing land in the private market. I'm sure Ms. Mac would know about this. And a lot of new housing estates are in new territories, and the flats acquired by the URA are located in urban areas. So this is something we would cover when we review our overall policy. Ms. Mac might know that the URA is discussing certain cooperation with the Housing Society. They are discussing a potential cooperation in that some flats would be given, or a number of units would be given to the Housing Society. For the capsule-like accommodation, we would provide a written response. The session must end by 5:40, and three members are waiting to speak. Ms. Alokin, Mr. Wuchihai, and Mr. Tongli. Ms. Alokin, Chairman, I have two comments and one question. Having followed the conversation as district personnel, we find it very hard to come to speed with the policies. In question 218, on the public-private housing ratio, like Mr. Chu said, if your goal is to build more public housing, why are some sites be, why are some sites used for private development? For the Southern District, for the Leitong South Industrial Area, it's used for private development. It is a urban sites. It can be developed for public housing, and there's a need, but it's not being done. In your reply, you talked about the Hong Kong 2030 plus, and you said the departments are 66 hectares short. So if you are short of land for the Carolyn Hill roadside, and you're building a court as well as commercial facilities, and in the Sun District, we need a complex. You want to accommodate certain facilities in government premises, but you're not realizing that through your policy. So that is just a comment. For question 223, you talked about the Hong Kong 2030 plus study. You would need a holistic plan before we can come up with a proper decision. Earlier, let's go discuss the Route 11 for Hong Kong Island residents. Even though the government has been talking about Route eleven and the trans, and that is irrelevant to the connectivity between Hong Kong Island and Kowloon. But according to your earlier report, that was, that is your intention. So can you come up with a holistic transport study? You should not act like you are planning a route and people would saw, see something else in another report. So the planning is scattered and apparently you are paving the way for big elephant or white elephant projects. So you should have holistic plan. And for Hong Kong Island, do we have to pass by Kowloon? This is about the fourth Cross Harbour Tunnel. So without such discussion, is that the only point of entry? If we do not discuss that, we cannot come up with a solution.
So in this consultancy study and further studies, you should take this particular perspective on board. And also two three one, it's a study on the wholesale market. As respect of in respect of Chongsha One Wholesale Market, whether it should be relocated. Is that there's going to be a study? When will be done? When are we going to have details? Please be succinct in your reply, Secretary. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ngao. Mr. Ngao has pointed out that there are different aspirations for land use. For example, residential size, there's a shortage. There's a shortage of residential size for grade A commercial building size and so on and so forth. And of course, we're going to tie in with the S T B, T H B. In the study concerned, I would refer your views to Mr. Frank Chan. As for the Kowloon, I'll ask Ms. Ho, Deputy Secretary, to respond. On the wholesale market study, we believe in the second quarter, this year, we can start the study. It will take about two years. Mr. Tongni Chair, thank you, Chairman. I want to follow up a number of replies. First one, O O two, reply serial number O O two. I welcome the setting up of the steering group to streamline the process. The industry has made a number of suggestions. Let's hope that after the procedure is streamlined, we can have more supply, we can increase the supply. As for the steering group, I'm glad to learn that the streamlined procedure will be launched in the second half of this year. And there will be a new review of departmental procedures to speed things up. And sometimes the procedure will involve more than one bureau. So please also look into this or are you going to look into this? Secretary, thank you for your question. I appreciate your support for the direction we are going to take so as to increase land supply. In some of the relevant procedures, processes, more than one department under the Development Bureau will be involved, but they may have different processes involved. Ms. Benadil Ling, the permanent secretary of my bureau, would be the head of this steering group. And also, can we also involve the Fire Services Department? Which is not under the purview of the Development Bureau. Would like to first of all involve the three departments to work things out first. We won't wait until we can implement all of them. We can, we'll implement some of them if they are ready to be launched. And if there's an opportunity to talk to other government departments, we are more than willing to do it. I hope the secretary will not ignore the issue of matters that would straddle the portfolios of different departments. Such as environmental protection and fire services. Please look into those. Second, zero reply number O O nine. For the next six years, you are going to spend three billion dollars for O B B two point O. And it said that you are going to provide technical and financial support to eligible owners. Which department would be responsible for providing the technical support? There are two target, two groups of target buildings. One, those who have owner's corporation. And the U R S, U R A would be the agency to help them. U R A would show the administrative course and would not incur anything out of the three billion dollars. For buildings without owner's corporation or cannot form their owner's corporation, then they would involve the director of buildings to carry out necessary building maintenance works by invoking statutory powers of the director. Mr. Wuchiyi, in the N T, many agricultural sites have been turned into brownfield sites. When the government announces that certain agricultural sites would be shown C A conservation area or some other songlings. And then the sites will no longer be developed anyway, in any way. And in the process, no compensation is paid to the landowner. So the landowner would say, would think that if I keep the land well and I do not damage it, the land may be shown, the C A. Or the government may say that this is good agricultural land. Then no future development will ever be allowed by the government. And on the other hand, there's no policy incentive to encourage owners of agricultural land to conserve such agricultural land. So would the government conduct a study or to change the existing policy? In case you have resumed an agricultural land as a C A or you have subsumed it as part of country power, would you consider changing the policy of no compensation paid to landowner? So that you can have an additional tool to encourage landowners to conserve such land. Yesterday, I asked a question about rates. According to race ordinance, agricultural land in N T is not charged for, under the race ordinance. If they use the land for agricultural land, that is a farming or livestock farming. So they say a definition of agricultural use. According to the government, the lands department would inspect these sites. And theoretically, if the sites are now turned into brownfield sites, they are subject to rates. But I tried to look up the information from your website. But the information is not available or if, and we don't know whether rates are charged or whether exemption or waiver has been granted. I would like the government to look, the director to look into the law enforcement on land use. They are not paying rates, they are not paying rent and they use their agricultural land as a brownfield size. Let me answer the first question first. Is there any way to make sure the rural land can be better? Yes, there are some way we can do it. For example, let's look at Xiaolong. Through a land exchange, non-instituted land exchange arrangement, we can better conserve the land in Xiaolong. But not all sites can be handled like this. I've heard your comments, Mr. Wu. But the songling, we are not going to pay compensation because of rezoning in the O C P. This is a long-established policy. I can only tell you that the government at present has no intention to change that policy. As for the rates and assessment of rates by R M V Department, we will do our best as long as we can get hold of information. But the rural land utilization and land use there can be very complicated and can change. It's a challenge that we will try to get hold of information on a timely manner. The next session will start at five fifty-five.